Tyler.
Hi Jonathan.
It's Tuesday.
It's time for Minot Talk.
Two P M every Tuesday.
It is.
Minot Talk.
It's two, right? We're live. It's gotta be two.
Absolutely. We got some exciting stuff to talk about today. Last week I don't. What did you do last Tuesday?
You know, a quiet day. Didn't do much.
Yeah, I got stuck in this room for like three hours. I couldn't get out.
And some guy was just yapping in your the whole time.
The whole time. It was a great time. We were able to talk about the election results as they were coming in. It was fantastic. We're going to talk about some of those because we were on a trend last week. Every single time we took a break, results came out.
Went three for three on it.
Went three for three. We ended at ten P M because we weren't sure how late into the night is going to go at ten oh six. It was official who the city council members were going to be. So we're going to talk about that today. And we have some exciting events coming up in Minot. Thursdays downtown are back. Jared Schumeyer is going to be there this week.
Yep, gonna be a fun band. Gonna, it's always a good time downtown.
You're doing something on Saturday.
Called the Midsummer Nights Festival. They've had it for a few years in town. It's a Friday, Saturday. It's at the Dakota or the Heritage Park in Minot here. And one of the fun events, this is the first year they're hosting Sure Strom and Eating Contest. If you're unfamiliar with that is, it is allegedly one of the
Allegedly.
Strongest smelling foods there's ever been and not in a positive way.
You said it's not quite as bad as Lutefisk?
It's apparently worse and I don't hate Lutefisk. It's not that bad in my opinion, but.
And that's where we, he's a redhead. I'm not like we begin to see the differences start really taking place.
Oh, you betcha.
Oh, you betcha. All right.
It's gonna be fun though. At seven P M Saturday, if you want to come out, you'll see me.
You like pancakes?
I love pancakes.
Well, guess what? June twenty second, eight A M at old, there's gonna be Old Settlers Day at Pioneer Village.
That's fantastic. Have you ever been to the Pioneer Village?
You know what? I have not.
It's fantastic. Used to be at the State Fairgrounds.
It did.
Issues.
I remember that. I probably was there by default then.
Yeah, you at least passed by it at some point. And a few years back ended up getting moved out past Burlington. It's a great time. It's really nice setup from an old, old west kind of style village. Have a lot of fun things to do there. A lot of fun stuff to see. I know there's gonna be a flea market going on there too on Saturday, I believe.
So how did the name Flea Market ever come around?
Yeah, I have no idea on that one.
Because it really, growing up, that never made sense. Like, oh, that's the flea market. Don't go there.
Flea is full of fleas, right? Is it just a reference to old things or?
That's not very nice.
No, but I don't, I don't get.
I don't know. Eight A M Old Settlers Day at Pioneer Village Pancakes, ten A M Flea Market in Remnichdale, ten thirty Parade on Johnson Street, one P M Live Music by Frozen Fingers himself. A bunch of other things to do. Check it out this weekend.
It's gonna be fun.
And I think there's one more thing we had Sundays in the park.
Oh, yeah. Minot City Band is going to be performing this weekend. They're, that's always fun at Oak Park.
We're missing one event, though.
What's the big one?
Going on Thursday.
This Thursday?
This Thursday.
June twentieth.
June twentieth, six P M. We're joined by Isaiah Keller, Director of Seeds of Eden here in Minot. Thanks for joining us today, Isaiah.
You're welcome. And I didn't realize that you had a co-host. He also looks like you, by the way. I don't know if there's a half brother somewhere that you're not telling us about, but.
That's right.
I didn't realize we're live, but I'm supportive of all of it, so.
Yeah, well, I'm throwing a bunch of side curveballs. That's what they're called. Curveballs at you today, so sorry about that.
All right. That's great.
Um, that's how we ride sometimes. So tell us about what's going on Thursday at six P M.
We are having what we call a friend raiser. That term is maybe a little new or foreign to a lot of the public. But basically what, what has happened in recent times is organizations have felt instead of having repeated fundraisers and there's a time and place for a good old fashioned fundraiser for nonprofits. We thought we need to get on the bandwagon of hosting friend raisers. And we've had one. We had one in Bismarck last year. It was a great time. And basically our goal is not necessarily to raise money, although that is always helpful and encouraged, but that's not our focus. Our focus is raising new friends and new partners in the community to network and do business with. And so that is the focus. And with that, just raising awareness of our mission and vision, which is recovery oriented, so.
Right, so tell us a little about what Seeds of Eden does. I know that there's a few locations that you have throughout North Dakota now. It's growing quickly.
Oh, yes. So Thursday, we're having a friend raiser, six P M at the Sonesta Essential Hotel. And what we do at Seeds of Eden is we are a local nonprofit. We basically center our work and vision on behavioral health, public health, assisting people, meeting people where they're at, and that could really range from, it could range anywhere from like substance abuse issue to mental health challenges. It could be someone that maybe doesn't even meet those qualifications, but they might just be homeless or they may just need help spiritually. And so we're a faith-based provider, nonprofit, looking to help people that most of the time are down and out and kind of at their end, like, like much of us were, some of us, some of the board of directors and those working in the program, so. So, yeah, we're very much community-based minded.
Absolutely. It's always incredible to hear the success stories that come out of it. I know that there's been a few. Is there any that top of mind that you know wouldn't be mine being shared? Put you on the spot.
Actually, I do. Yeah. And, you know, so we've been operating a little over a year and after a year goes by, you, you kind of look back on the timeline. You look back on the reel and you see the challenges. You, you, you sometimes look at things that happen that were challenging, difficult. But then you also look at the successes and, and after a year, you're gonna have a few. If you're doing something right, you're gonna have some successes and we have, we've had a lot of successes and pretty amazing testimonies. I'm thinking of a gentleman right now, just on the top of my head, who had really, all that he had known was, was drug use and drug dealing. And grew up in a very rural, very isolated tribal community. And his, his illegal businesses, his dealings finally had caught up with him. And he found himself in trouble, in jail, under a federal indictment. And he, and this is a story that he literally shared with me yesterday. He began to, for the very first time, pray in his jail cell. And this was inspired by another inmate who told him that he need, he needs to start praying. And this is, this is coming from a guy who had never, ever, ever in his life prayed before. And he said he began to do that and things began to happen. And basically one thing led to another. He ended up getting into treatment and was successful. He entered into our program probably about six months, seven months ago. And successfully completed our program and moved out onto his own. And now he is a peer support specialist for us, helping and giving back in incredible ways, even in his own hometown, his own community that he, that he came from. And so literally within a year, full circle, and now not just rehabilitated, not just recovering, but empowered to give back and, and to help others that are in a similar situation. So he'll actually be speaking on Thursday night and we're excited about that.
Great.
That's neat. So Thursday night, that's kind of where all this kind of joins together. It's the ability for you guys to connect in with the community and showcase what you're doing, develop some relationships and things like that. I hear it's gonna be a great time. You can have some great speakers and there's gonna be some shakes and stuff like that. That's all fun, right?
There'll be, there'll be some shakes, some teas. We, we want to make it accommodating under whatever budget we can afford. But what we're finding is that a lot of people know what we do and who we are in our little recovery bubble. Yeah. But that's not really the real world is so what we're finding is that as we're communicating and as we're interacting with, with, you know, could be, it could be business leaders or business owners, but it doesn't have to be just, just people in the community, kind of your, your middle, your, your middle class, middle to upper class folk, they don't really know who we are. And, and we see that as a problem because we know that addiction and mental health affects all layers of society. It affects the attorney and their kids, the judges, and it affects literally all layers, the doctors. And so we want to make sure we're connecting with all demographics, all layers of society. That way we can help perhaps some of the individuals that we would normally not come across in our day to day walk, you know, in our, in our day to day activities. We don't always rub shoulders with much of the rest of society. And so hopefully this kind of brings in a, an inclusivity, you know, amongst just the various classes of people and in our community, so.
Try to help put away a lot that negative stigma towards a lot of people in recovery that way. Try to help open them up to the community and get the community to realize that these are people too. We, they, they're recovered individuals that are working through an issue and they always will at this point, but they're, they're one of, they're trying to become just like you and me at this stage.
Yeah, yeah, there's always gonna be some stigma. I mean, some of it, some of it is healthy and some of it is not, but I think, I think the biggest thing that we're really trying to accomplish here is, is for someone that needs help, most of the time, they're not gonna be reached by a clinician. They're not gonna be reached by a police officer. They're really probably not gonna be reached by anybody in a professional role. Typically, they're gonna be reached by their family member, their friend, a peer. And so what we're reaching for is people that have basically exposure, contact with the people that they know need help. And so if there's some sort of a lifeline, some sort of a connection made there, then it's much easier because a lot of people don't know how to help or they don't know where to go to get help. And so we may not be the end all, or we may not be the person that provides the help, but I know people who can. And that, that's kind of where, that's kind of where we're at is even if we're not the place for, for somebody that, you know, needs to help, we can get them to the place that, that can help them. And, and studies have shown that most people who need help aren't getting the help.
Yeah.
You know, we're gathering a swath of society that are being treated and rehabilitated and finding spirituality and getting what they need in life to move forward, but that's, it's still very marginal. For the most part, people that are struggling are not really getting the help. And so that's a problem and we want to help solve that, so.
Very cool. So Thursday, six P M at, I can't say the place name. You say it.
Sonesta Essential. There you go. I think it was branded. It was the comfort suites that's over by Walmart, so. Sure. But yeah, we've got a nice conference room there and it'll be a fun time. Lots of door prizes, so come ready to win, I guess.
In one layer or another. So fantastic. Thank you for joining us, Isaiah.
Thanks, guys. Have a good night. Have a good day.
Thank you.
There you go, man.
Great service they're providing there. Addiction's one of those unseen white elephant in the room kind of things that were a lot of, not just our community, communities all over struggle with, so. For sure. Fantastic service what they're providing there.
Absolutely. So.
Want to lighten it up?
That's where I'll be at six P M on Thursday.
I'll probably still be at work.
Yeah, it happens to the best of us. You said you're gonna lighten it up?
The one, we move on a little bit, try to, try to lighten it up when I want to talk about last Tuesday, do some final numbers. I don't know if light.
What we never did.
All right, we never. All right. Over the final, final counts with a lot of these.
Yeah, this is gonna be interesting discussion, actually. So, um, yeah.
Numbers pulled up here.
Pulling up the city council numbers.
Yeah.
But very interesting race, obviously something that you love to point out is the fact, and I have the numbers too.
Fantastic.
Is that our exit polls were pretty close.
They were almost spot on for the top four spots in the council especially. So the actual results were.
Here we go. Drum roll, please.
Exactly. Mike.
That's just crap.
Get the cheers too. Mike Blessam took first. He had thirty one hundred votes, so just a hair over twenty percent. Second was Rob Fuller at twenty six hundred at seventeen percent. And then Scott Samuelson came in third with twenty two hundred and fifty four votes at fourteen point four percent. And then Mikeson was in fourth at twenty one hundred and thirty votes or thirteen point six percent. So if you take that and you go and you look at our polls that we had, so for our city council polls, we had Mike Blessam coming in first and then Samuelson and Fuller both coming in effectively a tie for second at sixteen percent. We had Blessam at twenty one percent. Then we had Geetson at fourteen percent in fourth, so.
So if you have any questions about this, comments, drop in, drop them in, we'll, we'll address them. Yeah, so crazy.
It was. I'm, it's just one of those things. Polls are polls. You can't, you gotta take the grain of salt, but I like that this showed that maybe there was some rhyme to the reason of doing them, that at least it showed that there was an end game to it.
On the final results.
Yeah.
What is, are you surprised?
Mostly, I, I, I think the fact that all three of them that ran together won is a little surprising. I mean, you saw their signs everywhere and they pulled together for this reason, but I, I think it's still just the sheer odds of all three of them taking the three spots is a little shocking. Maybe not shocking, but.
No, surprising. I agree. I definitely thought that one of the incumbents would still get elected.
I, yeah, I thought that ju- just from the sheer odds of it, one of the other four would surpass one of those three.
Yeah.
It's gonna be.
I might agree with that, but I specifically felt one of the incumbents were, and it's surprising to me, and maybe all people will strongly disagree this, and maybe this is a statement of my not saying, hey, we actually don't like what's going on. I have no idea. I'm not trying to get into the middle of that argument by these statements. But it's interesting to me that the closest incumbent was fifth on the list.
Without a doubt. And I know the Padraig Gool and Berlin game both ended up near the bottom with one, one more coming underneath them. And I, I think this went around with.
But Padraig Gool was one and a half percent away.
Yeah, without a doubt. You, you look at those numbers. It's not like they were too far away from each other, just sheer votes between them. I mean, you look at.
Leif was pretty far down.
He was separated for sure, but even Padraig Gool from Samuelson is only about two hundred votes difference from third to fifth. I mean, and Minot and Ward County only had fifteen percent voter turnout, which was incredibly low, so.
But probably pretty average.
A little below average. Four years ago, we had about twenty four and in twenty sixteen, we had twenty percent.
So you're going with presidential election.
Presidential election years, yes, which this year is as well.
Yep. Interesting.
Just looking at the primary stats for him, yeah.
That's good. That's good. I like it.
And I think it'll be interesting to see, last night was the last city council meeting with our current group. So having the three new ones in there starting in July, it's gonna be an interesting play. And I think it, just like you mentioned, Minot has a, seemed to have an affinity for the axing of incumbents this year. It was a common theme across the board.
It was a thing.
At least in Minot and Ward County area.
But, but that didn't carry over into the, into the district races.
No, not at all. No, no.
Did carry over into the school board, which is probably what you're getting.
The, the school board and the city council are the two big ones for, you look at the district races. I mean, the only technical newcomer was Christina Wolf and she won. Lisa Olson, obviously newcomer to that race, but for District Thirty Eight House specifically here. And then of course, Dan Ruby's been there for a long time and he.
He'll continue to be there.
For at least, yeah, for another four years here.
That's max.
That is, then he's out.
And he's either going Senate or he's done.
Yep.
I asked him and they didn't want to answer.
They got for three years to figure that out, right?
They do. And that's fair. That's a good answer for them. All right, so that's interesting. What about the Ward County Commission race? Cause this was an interesting one.
It was.
So mind boggling how you have, you, you have this open seat. And so then how many people were there that jumped in trying to get right, wrote in?
Six.
Six people.
So, so yeah, a little more backstory on it. There's five total positions in the Ward County Commission. This year there were three that. Uh, this year there were three that were up for election. Um, one of the incumbents, excuse me, chose just not to run at all, period. Uh, I believe his name was Bucky.
Bucky.
Bucky. Yes. Buggy Henderson. That is it. And he chose not to run. He chose to step down from this election. And then so on top.
Did he make a statement saying that?
I guess I don't know if he ever stated that, but he never filed paperwork to run for reelection again. So on top of that, then you had uh, the other two uh, two more incumbents, uh, Shelley uh, Hickel, I believe, or not Hickel.
Wepler.
Wepler. That's it. Yeah. Shelley Wepler. Uh, she's the other incumbent that filed for reelection to meet uh, upon by the deadline at least. Then you had one other person, Jim Rostad, uh, excuse Rosted and uh, go file by the deadline as well.
He did not file, right?
Oh, he did. No, excuse me. He's the final incumbent that did not file. Yes, by the deadline. So Jim Rosted, the third incumbent did not file in time by the deadline. So that deadline comes, we only have two candidates that have filed for three open positions.
The two candidates were Shelley Wepler and Jedidiah Raider.
Raider. Yes. Yep. And those two were on the ballot regardless. And then all of a sudden, we have an issue for this last seat and we have six people then step in as write in candidates to try to get on to the ballot for this in November.
See, I think we talked about this before. But isn't that weird?
A little.
Why? Why was there suddenly when there was an open spot? Why was there suddenly six people that were interested in running for Ward County Commission?
I I I get Ross dead's reason for stepping back and he saw no one else was doing it. So as the incumbent.
But there was six other people that were doing or five other people that are doing it, actually.
And and with them, that's the real question I have as well. Why? Why the interest? Posts.
Yeah, but I have the same question for Jim Ross did.
Fair.
Did he just not want to campaign against anybody? Cause now he definitely is. He's campaigning against five other people, actually.
Incredibly contested election now coming up in November.
Yeah.
It's it's going to be as contentious as an election Ward County will be.
To our viewers, we'll do our very best to make sure we bring you interviews with each one of those candidates. We'll be reaching out soon. Candidates be on the lookout. We'll be following that closely because it'll be interesting. But and there's interesting questions to be asked there about where that interest suddenly came from.
Without a doubt. Then so uh, top of that, of the six that signed up for the write in candidates, uh, five, they needed three hundred votes to advance. Uh, five of them did, uh, those being the aforementioned Jim Ross, uh, Jim Rosted. We also had Ron Merritt, Miranda Schuler and Ashley Levitt.
That's only four.
Uh, total five, I guess. Excuse me.
Move on?
Yes.
I can't do math. Well, there's only four. Ron Merritt, Jim Ross, Dad Miranda Schuler and Ashley Golkey.
Oh, excuse me. And then Zachary Rakinrood would have been the fifth. So excuse me, there were five total writing candidates at that.
Uh, we messed up.
I did. I had my numbers mixed up in my head.
You're fine.
My bad. I'm not an expert, folks. I will reiterate.
We're working on that. Okay, so five total writing candidates. Four of them moved on.
And so
Those four are Ron Merritt, Jim Ross, Dad, Miranda Schuler, Ashley Golkey, Golkey.
They will be moving on to the November general election, running against uh, the incumbent, uh, Shelley Wepler and Jedidiah Raider as well.
Gonna be an interesting watch there.
So six, six candidates for three spots come November.
Very good.
And on top of that, we had the state superintendent race. That one finished up and
We'll uh, talk about that in a minute. Who do you got? Who's your three?
Four for Ward County. I mean, I'll have to go with Shelley.
You're gonna do it?
Raider, uh, just my tentative, I would say, based on how the first role went.
Okay, so this is not you're endorsing.
No, not a not.
This is who you're guessing.
This is a pure speculation on who
Okay.
in middle of June might win in November.
Yes.
We'll we'll go with uh, Shelley uh,
Wepler.
Wepler.
You you don't like that last name.
I I'm struggling with it for some reason. The the W gets
I get it. I feel it.
Lexic.
I'm in the same.
We have Shelley Wepler and uh, Jedidiah Raider. I think those two who are the top vote getters in June likely will go on, but I mean, who knows at this point? And then on top of that.
Through the top boat getters because
They were. They were the only ones on the ballot. That's true. Uh, Wepler being an incumbent, I think that press
I feel I feel that.
Presents at least some form of
Jedirater will be interesting because he doesn't have like Ron Merritt. Has a lot of name recognition. Jim Rosted has a lot of name recognition. Miranda Schuler has a lot of name recognition. Um, and Ashley Golkey. Her name is on the rise.
Without a doubt. These are people that are known throughout the community in Minot and uh, I I having the heads up or the the jump on them might be in benefit to them.
Yeah, I think so.
And at the same time, the sheer right name recognition of some of these other people could end up getting them the jump, but we have a lot of time for that. And I think one thing that could be interesting to find out more is what all Ward County Commissioner does.
Absolutely.
I think we could, if we could have one of them on the show in the future, that would be exciting. Oh, we will.
Well, at least have them in the podcast. We might go to get them on the show.
Exactly. Worst case, Election Central, you'll have them.
Or Minot, Minot Matters.
Minot Matters.
We got so many stuff. Let's break it down right now.
Yeah.
We have Election Central.
Yeah.
Covers statewide elections.
Yeah.
That covers district races, stuff like that. Anything to do with Bismarck or federal. And then we have Minot Matters. That covers everything Minot and out through Ward County. So Ward County falls into that one.
All hosted by our guy Jonathan Starr.
Absolutely. And then we have Minot Talk, which is our attempt to bring back radio, talk radio to Minot. Every Tuesday, two P M. And we would love to by the end of the year expand into two or three, four or five days a week.
Yeah, without a doubt. That would be the ultimate goal.
And multiple Part of how that would happen is other people become inspired and have issues that matter that they want to talk about on a weekly basis.
Exactly.
It'd help.
And we we would love to expand that platform. We would love to have, we we would love to become even, we want to stay consistent on Tuesdays, but we want to become even more consistent and branch out.
We actually have one other main podcast that we use and that's the conversation. The conversation is supposed to be a podcast that talks about interesting topics in general for North Dakota. Love it. We've talked with F five project, um, Adam Martin about recovery. Um, and they're they're based out of Fargo.
Sure.
That was an interesting conversation with him. I I can't remember if we may have had um, Derek Hackett on that one as well.
I know you interviewed him for sure, but yeah.
Um, but yeah, some interesting conversations on that. And that's something that is background right now because we've been focused on election central stuff, but
Lo and behold, June time, little busy for us.
And there's another podcast that's coming.
Yeah, well, maybe not a podcast, almost maybe a documentary series might be the better way to describe it.
Okay.
Uh, it's called, we're gonna call it No DAK. So Getting to Know North Dakota. Uh, we're working, I specifically am working on a few uh, documentary type ideas. First one to uh, we teased it a little bit last week. First one, we're getting the script is pretty much ready with at this point. We're going to get some interviews conducted with some people that were there. It's about the two thousand two anhydrous ammonia spill in Minot happened uh, January of two thousand two. Lot of people affected by that. Uh, death, in fact, was involved and it is as far as I've been able to get my intelligence together, it is the largest anhydrous ammonia spill in U S history. And there's not a major serious documentary out there about it.
Wow. Well, that's gonna be coming soon.
It's exciting. I look forward to it and I hope everyone else does too.
So exciting stuff happening here at the Dakota, but there was some exciting stuff that also happened at city council just last night.
Last night, it was a busy night. It was like we said earlier, it's the last one in uh, our current status for the city council. Uh, so come July first, we're gonna have the three new members. I'll get it.
Carrie Evans wasn't there.
Carrie Evans wasn't. I was gonna mention that. Yep. She uh, was not present last night. So we only had six.
Do they give a reason?
They did not. She didn't meant, uh, they didn't mention. She didn't, uh, I I guess I don't follow her, but I didn't see anything mentioned about why she wasn't present, but she missed it unfortunately. And uh, it was a busy night, but they had it. It was a concise night in city council as well.
Good job. Way to go, city council.
They did good.
Way to be concise.
It was. I think it was as good as it could have been for what all happened.
So last city council with Steve Burlingham and Dr. Stephen Padraig Gula.
Without a doubt, this will be their last one. So uh,
Until unless they're ever elected again, we can't speak about the future.
For, yeah, for for the foreseeable future, it is their final one. So I just, I think real quick, a big thanks to Scott Burlingham and Dr. Padraig Gula for uh, their service for the community, especially uh, Dr. Padraig Gula for his twenty plus years of being in city council. I think he's gone. They they both did fantastic job and I think they should be commended for it.
That's that's that was our crap. We we had a nice crowd. Give them a nice round of applause.
The live studio audience is uh, ready.
On point today. All right.
Without a doubt.
What happened though?
It was uh, so starting out, uh, we had some consent, as as they always do, they have these consent items that they
We point them out. The article's coming out today.
Yep, it'll be out after this. So be on the lookout for it tonight. Uh, they had twenty consent items that they passed uh, last night. One of them that was interesting, I just just a food for your thought of what is in these things. One of them was uh, a acceptance of a bid to purchase new pickups for the city of Minot trucks. They bought from Wesley Motors and it was uh, hair over forty four thousand dollars.
Mind you, that the stuff that it goes on in those, they've probably been talked about at some point. This is not
Without a doubt.
Yeah, I have no idea what's going on, folks.
But no, it's not one of those things that's uh, super frequently uh, mentioned. And it's and it's one of those things that it's 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 something that the city finds doesn't need a lot of extra discussion. So they
And and there could have been discussion on them at some point.
And there could have been prior to, yes.
Sometimes it's the second approval that's going on. It just depends on what's going on and we'll talk in depth with somebody about it because I think it's important for people to understand those. And that, um,
And that brings to another consent item.
But uh, before we move on, I also want to explain like sometimes it's the budget, like there's forty four thousand dollars that are being spent. I think it's good that that's pointed out, but also understand that the time to get upset or before the city spending that forty four thousand dollars on those pickups was when budget was being done because most likely that was included in this year's budget saying, hey, we're gonna need to buy new pickups.
And so then the city went out, sought bids from different dealerships.
It was finally time. All right. This is the stuff we talked about. Let's go ahead and spend that money. You'll see the monthly or biweekly, bi-monthly uh, salaries be on consent items.
Yeah.
Uh, we need the salary because this money being spent has to be approved by the city.
Yeah. Um, so every week or every time there is one, there'll be the acceptance of the prior city council meetings minutes. It's
And so rather than taking a bunch of time, they try to group them together. But sometimes there's some interesting stuff in there. And that's why we've been kind of going over like, hey, this is actually what happened in the consent items. You probably, you could have missed it.
Without a doubt. And Dr. Stephen Padraig Gula last night pointed a few of those out. Uh, he had uh, items nine, seventeen and nineteen that he isolated. Uh, item nine was a telework uh, system that the city of Minot's working on implementing. He just wanted to commend that initiative. And then the item nineteen was something for uh, the back the blue grant, a national thing where we're trying to get sign on bonuses for new police officers. Another thing that's been a issue of debate in Minot lately, trying to
Are they thirteen officers short?
Exactly. So that's that's another thing he wanted to commend. Then one last thing was item seventeen, which was um, some ad administrative policy updates for uh, the collection of overdue fees and tickets in the city. And yeah, he just wanted to, there was a couple of items on there that he just wanted to tighten up a little bit and um, most of the city council was pretty generally on board with his ideas, but I the the council also wanted time to see the fiscal impact, the potential fiscal impact of it and what what all it could encompass. So they tabled that to uh, next week's meeting or July first's meeting.
Very well. So a different council will take care of that.
Without a doubt.
Interesting. It'll be interesting to see if it comes back up.
It will. Yeah. If they actually talk about it or if they just throw it back into the consent items.
Well, well, yeah. And because Dr. Padraig Gula won't be there to remind them.
Exactly. That's the thing. It will be without him at that stage.
Kind of, kind of be fun to see him show up.
Would just
And and
The public.
And uh, and be part of of public appearances and hey, you guys said you're gonna table this. Where's it at?
Discussion. Exactly. What? He he could turn into his own version of Josh Wolfski or something. He'd be his own watchdog now that he's off the city council.
Hey, it was great having Josh on two weeks ago.
Yeah, he did a great job. He is incredibly knowledgeable.
Yeah.
Super informed guy. He and and speaking of Josh, he also had a role at last week's, at last night's city council meeting too. Uh, so two weeks ago, we talked
We're gonna start Twitter account, tracking Josh.
Following Josh. Uh, so two weeks ago, he had um, the the all the talk about the knockback tavern and getting some executive sessions released uh, about over that and the discussions that were involved there. Well, last night he had a third date that he wanted to add to those executive uh, accessions to be released, which was March eighteenth. And then he also had a further point, which was any prior or future documents related to the purchase of knockback tavern also be released to public knowledge. And one thing that a lot of the city not so much the council, but city staff was worried about was adverse financial fiscal impacts was that that was kind of the
Yep.
The term they were throwing around a lot and on the the potential to have these purchases that we want to build in, knowledge to public before we purchase it. It's just the potential for the building owner to see that the city wants and for them to raise prices. There's no guarantee it will happen and there's no guarantee that the information will even get out per se. But it's just the sort of potential Pandora's Pandora's box that they could open at that point. But Mr. Wolfski got um, everything he wanted released and especially with the knockback tavern.
Do you think it's a legit legitimate concern?
I think it's a fair concern. I think it's, I I I think the transparency should be as open as we want, as it can be. I I think we should have the ability to know what they're discussing, but at the same time, I can't see the point. You don't want negotiations out there publicly for how we negotiate for things.
Yeah.
And it it's it's a fine line, but at the same time.
And honestly, like unless of we'll see what happens, but most likely as far as the how, they're probably trying to get as low as they can. The biggest deal in the how, I think that that is truly being represented by that is how much are they willing to actually pay?
Yeah.
So normally they start a hundred thousand dollars under and or five percent lower than the asking price. That's where their first bid goes in at. And then they're willing to go, you know, so then
Behind closed doors, they'll have the number that they all agree that they will go up to.
Right, yeah.
They don't want to if they don't have to, but they will reach this max cap kind of thing.
Yeah, most, yeah. But it'll be interesting to see what's actually there.
It will. And when Mr. Wolfski releases his findings on everything, we might be, we'll have tried to get him back on here or something because that that'll be an interesting subject.
I mean, if he got him, you can get him.
At this point, we could. We, I'm sure we could go to the city and ask for him at this point because they're they're public record now.
Yeah, good times.
It is. And uh, continuing on from that, uh, that was all approved unanimously by the council then to give him that March eighteenth. And I know they're already compiling other records, the city's attorney said. So they're working on getting that off Josh uh, as soon as they can. And then one of the other bigger agenda items last night was a a public appeal by a resident who wanted to expand his driveway. So the city of Minot has a maximum driveway width of forty feet. And technically thirty feet, but they can, they have exceptions for up to forty feet. And the resident wanted his driveway to be forty nine feet wide, so he could uh, get past his, the width of his garage. So he could park his camper in there without going over a curb or on the lawn kind of thing. And so he had a public appeal to get a special permit to be able to do so. Uh, city staff recommended no. Uh, there was quite a bit of discussion on it. They they went back and forth. They had to look up legal termin- or terms for a couple of uh, issues that came up. Um, it was, that was one of the most timely matters was this.
It's always the interesting part.
It it is. And and
Why would, why did city city staff recommend no?
Because it was ten feet over the already established width and they also thought that his status didn't meet the requirements for any potential ungainly need. The the potential for, you know, extra costs wasn't, didn't outweigh the need to over pave it.
But it'd just be his own cost.
It would be. And also I I know they also put the location of the residency as one of the reasons too. It was on, it's located on Hiawatha Street, which is a high
Uh huh.
A high, a higher traffic area in town. And it's also a pretty narrow road too. So I'm sure the construction there would be interesting. Uh, but city went around, they talked about it, they discussed it, and eventually they voted on it and it was rejected four to two. Uh, the two dissenters though were Dr. Stephen Padraig Gula and Scott Burlingame. So that's, that's kind of interesting.
Or the, yeah, the two without what that would have accepted it.
Yes, they 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 voted for, voted no, but that means they would be for the resident to be able to do
I got you.
The extension. Yeah, because
The vote was to accept the city's
Recommendation.
Recommendation.
Yep. So a little, you know, cloudy with that, but
It's kind of like when you get
That convoluted kind of.
The doctors report back and turns out it's na- you're negative.
Exactly.
You don't have a broken leg. Yeah. It's negative when having a broken leg. Uh, yeah. No, that's a good thing.
Yes, it's exactly. You just sprained the heck out of it.
Yeah. So interesting. All right. You know, those are, there was one, I think it was last year that was coming up about a guy that wanted to build up a a second garage or something like that. And and his neighbors didn't want it. It's interesting to see how those are brought up.
It is. And and I think it's a good, we've talked about this before with the liquor license appeal and everything that was going on with that, but I I think this is where else are you gonna do it at?
Well, it has to be done there because the city has the rules.
Exactly. It's a public appeal. It's a public hearing and it's it's the city's.
The biggest deal is this, stop getting upset at the city. There's a certain Facebook group that all they do is they get upset about things, but you don't see them at city council voicing those concerns. It's just all done.
Yeah.
Go to city council. That's kind of why we do this recap is like, hey, you can get involved and you can go and voice those concerns and they will be heard.
Every city council meeting, there's a public appearance section. Every city council meeting, there's a public appearance section where they invite anyone from the audience to come up and discuss anything they want. Preferably something on the agenda for the night, but it doesn't have to be by any means. And again, last night, no one was there.
So later today, you're going to be getting the article, uh, about recapping the city council, a lot of what we just talked about right now. Uh, but that'll be on our site, mydakodan.com.
Yep.
And now that we're through the election cycle, we're going to get back. Excuse me. You're going to be seeing a lot more, uh, daily posts, uh, on mydakodan.com as we're tracking national news that affects North Dakota, North Dakota news that affects Minot and Minot local news. Um, so be sure to be going to mydakodan.com to be getting some of that latest news. Every Tuesday, we're here. We're here for you.
2:00 PM.
2:00 PM. Um, next Tuesday, we'll be back. We'll have some interesting guests, uh, next week, um, to talk about what's going on.
I'll have a story from this, uh, Saturday's midsummer night festival.
That's right.
If I was able to keep my lunch down or not.
Good luck there, buddy.
It'll be a great time.
Yeah. So a lot, a lot of exciting things happening.
Yep.
Um, yeah.
It's exciting. You have anything else?
Might be a wrap, dude.
I think we're good today. I think after last week's double dip with the three hour show, I think we're good today.
Three hour election.
Technically, we were live four hours last Tuesday.
Yeah. Our, at least an hour of Minot Talk. You were going to mention something with the state superintendent.
Oh yeah. I was, I guess we were just going to mention that. I think it was technically finalized before we were able to call it before we got off, but, uh, it will be, uh, Kristen Basler versus, uh, Jason Hightcamp in the, uh, final election this fall. And that is technically again, a nonpartisan race.
So how did, so you had, they just had to get a certain amount of votes?
Yep. Yep. The top two vote getters, uh, move on to the final general election in, uh, November. And that'll be Jason Hightcamp versus longtime incumbent Kristen Basler. And, uh, it'll be interesting because, uh, like I know we mentioned last week, Jason Hightcamp has a lot of name recognition.
But Basler has a ton.
She does as well. And also Hightcamp, albeit with that much name recognition, a lot of the people that recognize that name, he doesn't necessarily. So it's, the Hightcamps are Democrats in the state and Jason, uh, is not. He was a state, uh, legislature as a Republican. So, and he, he definitely-
So you're going to group all the Hightcamps together and say that Jason is the only one that's not a Democrat?
Generally speaking.
The ones in the public eye have been-
Yes.
I, he's referring to Heidi Hag.
Heidi and her brother. Yeah.
Yep.
So those, those are the two specific ones that we're mentioning. But yeah, so generally they're associated with democratic politics in the state and-
It'll be interesting.
Will.
Um, I think his biggest problem though is going to be just overcoming incumbency.
Yeah. Because I mean, that, that was one of those races where the incumbency did, did hold up compared to the outside.
But how mu- how, how many campaign ads? How much did you see from Chris, Kristen Basler?
I don't think I saw anything. Maybe a couple of signs around town.
Maybe.
Maybe. I mean, at the most.
And I guess I didn't see a ton from the other guys either.
No, that's the thing for anyone in that race. I don't think I saw much.
But I, I think incumbency is going to be a hard thing to be, to overcome.
Yeah. And with that one, she's been there for, and she's also a former educator. I know, uh, Jason has all the right goals in this, but I know he, I, I don't believe he's ever taught. So I don't know if that will affect it any way, shape or form.
But, but she had, in the past received the, you're talking about-
Endorsements.
You're, yeah, endorsement, but you're talking about Jason Hightcamp coming from a family that has democratic ties. Um, and he's a cousin to them. He's not to, he's like cousin to Heidi.
Cousin.
Whatever. So, so that, that, that's neither here nor there. But with Kristen, she did not, she, in the past, she received the Republican endorsement. This year they're like, no, we are not endorsing you. And she's, didn't have nice things to say about the party afterward.
Without a doubt. Yeah. I know there's a lot of contention between her and the state party after that, uh, GOP convention. So it, it'll be interesting to see how it ends up playing out throughout the summer.
There'll be some stuff we might have to, I might have to bring up when I interview Sandy Sanford.
Hey, there you go.
She said she would do that. Remember that?
Yeah. She did.
We have it on video.
You have like four people that agreed to do interviews from last Tuesday.
That was pretty, that was a pretty bad idea. I guess you know, good and lonely.
Now, now, but now you gotta live up to it. You gotta interview.
That's all right. It'll be fun, man. Well, it's been a good time interviewing, getting to know people.
It has. I, I love watching everyone you do.
Well, that's, that's not the point. It's, it's, it's great doing my, I talk with you as well. Okay.
It is. I, I enjoy this. I, I appreciate everyone watching. So thanks for checking us out. Remember to like, subscribe, comment. If you're on YouTube, hit that bell button to get notifications when we go live every Tuesday at 2:00. And for every time that Jonathan posts one of his interviews, make sure to check us out.
And when we had that docu-series come out.
It's coming out soon. Probably end of this month, beginning of next.
Pretty exciting stuff. So make sure you stay involved, listen to everything he said. Thanks for watching this episode. We're going to be back next week, 2:00.
Thank you.
Have a great day.